So, uh, thank you everybody for joining us. It's March 28th. It's 6:00 PM. This is a Town of Reinbeck regular town board meeting. Would everybody please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, Josh is here. Yep, Warren's here. Bob Wyatt's here. We had a full town board meeting. Joan, our deputy clerk, terrific. I'd like to make a couple of announcements. The spring egg hunt will be held on Saturday, the 9th of April at 10:00 AM at the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazarella Park. That is a Town of Reinbeck recreation.
And if anybody wants to help us on the 8th, set up for that. I will be there at 8:00 PM.
8:00 PM on the 8th? What if it rains?
Well, then we're, we're just there early the next morning, but we're assuming it'll be bright and beautiful.
Great. I'll be there. Um, what else? Okay, the town clerk's office will be closed on Monday, April 25th and Tuesday, April 26th. Our town clerk and our deputy clerk will be attending clerk school. So, um, that'll be great. Uh, also, we are canceling our town board meeting for April 25th, 2020 because our clerks will be at clerk school. Anybody else have any other announcements? Okay, I'd like to get a motion and a second for the approval of our meeting minutes from March 14th, 2021 and March 21st, 2021. May I have a motion? Thank you, Ed. May I have a second? Thanks, Alan. Is there any discussion? Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Great. Uh, I'd like a motion for Resolution 2022-092 authorizing $640,000 in bonds for the new multipurpose athletic field subject to a permissive referendum. Uh, Josh, may I have a second? Thanks, Alan. Um, we have Warren here. Warren, do you want to take us through this or you just want, how do you want to handle it? You're on mute, Warren. Warren?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Yeah, I mean, they, it's a bond resolution and it basically is also authorizing. Let me see the total amount. Give me a second. Let me get it out. Uh, the, uh, we, we've increased the amount that we're, um, of the total project to $1,557,000 because we've added a contingency into the contract. And the bond, uh, amount that we're obligated, uh, that we cannot exceed is $640,000. Uh, the rest of the funds we have in, at, at various sources, most of which we have already received, but we are still waiting for some of the funds like the Tom Frost, I think, grant that we're waiting for. So, uh, we wanted to make sure that we had enough money authorized in the, uh, bond provision of the resolution, uh, in case we need to borrow more. But, uh, $640,000 doesn't mean that we will borrow that amount. That's the limit on which, uh, we can borrow. And we're in the process of, um, working out a contract, uh, with Field Turf. It's a large organization that builds these soccer fields. We've gotten a contract from them. Uh, it's quite, um, extensive, uh, because it's a big project. We're, uh, in the process of reviewing it. We're being assisted by our engineer, uh, Padge, Larry Padge's office. So, we also have a resolution on the agenda that you will take up in a moment, uh, to authorize retaining the services of, uh, of an engineer to assist us for the local engineering, the in-house engineering that will need for supervision of the contract, um, and for negotiation for the contract, which you have before. So, we're, we're moving forward with this project. Keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, terrific. Thanks, Roy, your help with this, Warren. I just want to, we've also published along with this our anticipated, uh, costs for the project and the funding sources. We're still missing $30,000 from Porch Fest and we don't have a letter of commitment, Michael DeCola, from, uh, the Frost Foundation for the $100,000. We cannot move forward with this project until we can, until we receive those funds. We cannot bond for this until we have all of the funds in our, in our possession. So, while this allows us to bond, we won't move forward with this until we have those funds. Michael? I lost you.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Yeah, sorry. I was muted. Um, yeah, I think the letter of commitment and the Porch Fest funds are, uh, forthcoming. Any moment, any moment.
Okay, terrific.
They're in the mail.
Terrific. Hold our breaths. Uh, no, but we're excited about this and we know that people have been asking for it for a long time. Uh, we don't anticipate needing the contingency, uh, because it's, uh, but, you know, because it is a firm price with, uh, field turf, but we need to have it in there.
And, and just one other thing that, just note that the referendum, uh, that the, uh, resolution is subject to a permissive referendum.
Which means that any of the public can, um, can, um, take up a petition to have the town call a vote to see if, uh, they indeed want to spend this money on the field. So, that's within the public's right to do so.
Correct.
So, we, we have to wait 30 days for the permissive referendum to close before we can, uh, sign our contract with her field as well.
Correct.
Are there any further questions or comments from the town board? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thanks for that, Warren. Warren, while you're here, I wanted to, uh, oh, you know what? I'm sorry. I think I have to do this by voice.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Yeah, roll call. Do I need to open this up again?
Yeah, just open it up for, uh, a, a, a roll call vote on that.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to reopen Resolution 2020-092 for a roll call voice. Thank you, Josh. By roll call, uh, Josh Pulver.
Yes, yay.
Ed Roberts. Chauncey Walker. And Alan Scher. And I vote yes as well. So, it's unanimous by roll call. Um, thank you very much. Okay, Warren, while you're here, before you go, we have a discussion item, um, and I'd like to skip to it because we could probably use some advice on it. Um, we have a, um, enforcement issue regarding our noise regulations, specifically section 12558D6 of our Town of Reinbeck code and gas-powered leaf and snow blowers. I don't know. Josh, you want to take this one?
Yes. From Rock Cliff related to, um, leaf blowers and, um, there is a resistance or a lack of enforcement from our zoning enforcement officer. So, there's been a request for, uh, legislation related to, uh, noise and leaf blowers that we are contending with. So, I think Rudy is here to speak to that.
But wait, wait one second. Before Rudy speaks, and I don't know if we need Rudy to speak, our zoning administrator has said that there is an issue with our code. He is saying that our code is not enforceable because, um, sounds from domestic power equipment, et cetera, et cetera, including lawn and garden equipment, et cetera, et cetera, may not exceed 70 decibels at 10 feet. And he says that there are no gas-powered equipment that will pass this test. So, what he's saying is that, um, our zoning law isn't enforceable. Gasoline-powered leaf blowers are generally produce a noise level of 90 to 100 decibels at source. A leaf blower test can, he goes on and on and on. So, it's not that he doesn't want to enforce it. He's saying that the law is not enforceable. So, what we've been asked to do is place a moratorium on the enforcement of this while we look at soliciting input from the public on what the community would like to see regarding leaf blower regulations or, you know, what do we think about it? Is that accurate?
Sounds slightly more accurate than what I said.
Okay, that's why I, I know I tossed this to you, but I jumped in because I have Michael's letter in front of me. So, that's, that's what we're being asked to do. Rudy, is that your understanding?
That's correct. The, the law as it currently stands cannot be enforced.
Right. So, what do you guys want? Warren, do you have any opinion on this?
Well, I'm not sure. I agree that the law can't be enforced. I think what, what the, uh, zoning enforcement officer is saying is that there's almost no leaf blower that would, would pass the test. If you force it against one, you have to enforce it against all leaf blowers because they would be in violation of the law as written. I, I haven't really looked into the, uh, our law that, that carefully to see what we have and what alternatives we would have for enforcing these. I mean, they're, they're, they're quite ubiquitous. They're, they're, uh, you know, everybody uses lot, leaf blowers for a variety of reasons in the town, including snow removal now. So, it's possible that we may be able to take a look at our code and make a, uh, a better law. It's too early to issue any moratorium. Moratorium on, uh, uh, local laws or codes are usually not, uh, put in place until you're pretty law, far along in the local law adoption process. And purpose of the moratorium is to prevent people from sneaking in before the law is passed. So, um, I have no objection to working with the town board and our enforcement officer to take a look at the, uh, another look at the law, but it's, it's, it may be that it's very hard to draft a law that's good to apply.
Please put yourself on mute, uh, everyone who's not a town board member, please.
It, it, it may be a difficult law to pass, um, to, to enact. So, um, you know.
Well, here's the other thing is that we, we find that our noise laws are almost impossible to enforce.
Well, noise laws are difficult to enforce. They're not impossible to enforce. And, um, you know, there's a lot of litigation over, uh, the standards, uh, in local laws with regard to noise. And there's, you know, a, a, a lot of case law that exists. I'm not sure that our noise ordinance is unenforceable. It's just maybe that we need a better law that, to apply to these types of, um, equipment, um, so that we bring some peace to certain neighborhoods within the town.
Well, I mean, so are we going to look at, I'm going to poll the town board now. So, we're talking about gas-powered lawn mowers, leaf blowers, chainsaws, weed whackers.
Motorcycles.
Motors, like, are you guys, is this something that you want to do? We've had one complaint. You know, I, I don't think we've had any other complaints. One complaint.
I know.
Well, I have, I have two, two ideas. One is I would like to poll the town to see if anybody else has complaints, to see if there's a problem somewhere else. And then the other possibility is we could limit the use of these things between certain hours, which, uh, I think would help as a, as a different possibility.
Um, Ed, what are your thoughts?
I, I don't, it's just one person. I don't see problems. Unless we get three, four or five people, I don't, I don't see.
Josh?
I, I have scraped the inner, uh, sanctum of my mind to try to fix this. I don't know what the real answer is, to be honest with you. Rudy, I would like to figure out how to fix this, but at the same time, you're the one that's complaining about it the most and, um, I, I, I don't, I, I don't know what the answer is, to be honest with you.
Um, Chauncey, what's your, what are your feelings?
Tell me you're going to forget me.
No such luck.
If, if we want to ask Warren to take a look and see what can be done, fine, but, um, I would like to call to everybody's attention an article that appeared in the Daily Freeman on the 25th of February advising its readers that the Town of, I'm going to mispronounce it, the Soffas.
So bis.
Just voted 4 to 1 to give up trying to adopt a meaningful noise ordinance as too difficult. Now, I don't know the background. I don't, but that's what happened there.
Well, I mean, we discussed this in, in our mayor's and supervisors' monthly meeting and it's, it's one of the bains of everyone's existence because it's, it's like short-term housing. What do you, you know, how do you do it? How do you do it to everyone's satisfaction? Maybe we should put this on as, um, an item for public input at, at a couple of meetings and see if people show up. But we've had one complaint and I hate to, um, bang our heads against, oh, I hate to take this on as a local government. I understand the state may ban the use, but I, I, I feel like it's an overreach of local government to ban gas-powered. Even though personally I don't care for them, I just, so many people use them and rely on them.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you right now, you'll have a lot of pushback from a lot of the contractors in town who rely on these pieces of equipment for their livelihood.
Yeah, there's, there's, you know, electric chainsaws, gap, you know, lawn mowers, weed whacker. It's just, I, I think it's an overreach for us, but do you guys want to put it on for a couple of town board meetings as a discussion item for the public and see, you know, circulated and see if other people want to speak to this or other people have complaints or thoughts before we legislate for something that we've really, and I don't mean this in a bad way, only had one complaint about.
I'd be in favor of that.
All right, Joni, will you make a note to put this on the agenda item, uh, on the agenda for our next meeting and you and I will talk about it? Create, uh, any more discussion about this? Questions? Warren, I think we are, um, I don't know. You want to stay, you want to stay on for ARPA funding discussion, Warren, or do you want to go?
Yeah, just to listen to it. Uh, I, I wouldn't mind hearing what, you have to, everybody has to say, sure.
Yeah, and I real, we realize it's an environmental issue, but I, I think it's an overstep of local government. I think the state has to take this up. Um, so, uh, ARPA funding, we, um, we, uh, have been talking about this for over a year and we've had two, um, written comments so far, one from, uh, from, from two village residents, actually. And they're just looking for people who may have comments or inputs on what to do with our ARPA funding. We are advocating and planning on renovating town hall and getting our town hall employees out of a windowless, poor air quality basement and up to, uh, offices with, um, healthy air and sunlight. So, we're taking comments written or if anyone wants to speak to it on ARPA funding and we'll have it on our next few meetings. Okay, uh, I think we're good, Warren.
Okay, um, thanks. I have a little cold, so I wouldn't mind leaving. So, good night, everybody.
For all your help and we'll talk to you soon.
Okay, good night.
Okay, bye-bye.
Eleanor had her hand up.
All right, I, I'm sorry I missed that, but thanks. May I have a, um, motion for Resolution 2022-093 for approval to sign a credit application and agreement? Ed, thanks, Alan's second. Is there any discussion? Any, um, comments on this? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Um, I need a motion for Resolution 2022-094 to purchase a flail mower for the highway department.
Make a motion.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second? Thanks, Alan. Is there any discussion or questions regarding this? All in favor? Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Resolution 2022-095, approved conference attendant for myself and bookkeeper to the supervisor for the Office of the State Controller Finance School in Albany. May I have a motion? Thanks, Chauncey. May I have a second? Thanks, Josh. Um, any discussion or questions? Well, actually, there's a big thing on ARPA funding on this too. So, we will have fun. It's, it's a scintillating. You always learn something. Sometimes it's brutally hard, but Shelley's really hot.
Wolf Road is amazing.
What?
Wolf Road in Albany is really special.
But have you seen the agenda for this meeting?
I have, I actually have, yeah.
It's scintillating. You know, um, uh, establishing an accounting for reserves, financial condition and financial reporting analysis. Oh, yeah, recording activities for elected and appointed officials, state and federal procurement rules to follow using ARPA funds, tales from the field and ask your, ask your Office of the State Controller. Did we vote on this?
No.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So, moved. Um, I'd like to make a motion for, um, Resolution 2022-096 for preliminary account payables abstracts. May I have a second? Thanks, Ed. Is that Chauncey?
Either one.
I was one of them.
Aye, I think it was a tie.
I'll take Chaunce. All right, all, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So, moved. Um, is there any new business before the town board? Oh, I know there is. That's, that's crazy.
Yeah, extra, yes.
We have like 40 resolutions. Uh, hold on, okay. I need a motion for, uh, Resolution 2020, 2022-097, requesting a 30-day extension for filing our 2021 annual update document with the Office of the State Controller. I will make a motion. Um, may I have a second? Alan? Okay, any discussion? Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for Resolution 2022-098, hire a clerk for the Conservation Advisory Committee, CAB.
Make a motion.
Ed, may I have a second? Josh, okay. Any questions? Any comments?
No, but if anybody's willing to be a CAB board member, there's an application you can find online. We're welcoming applications.
Thanks, Josh. We do have a white paper on the CAB and for the Citizens Advisory Committee, we had 60 people show up for those meetings, uh, very concerned. And we'd like to ask that some of the people came to our meeting step up and volunteer for the CAB or the Citizens Advisory Committee, but we'll, we'll get that out, uh, in an email blast. Any further discussion on Resolution 2022-098? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So, who? Um, I need a motion for Resolution 2022-099, which is the resolution authorizing the retention of Lawrence Padge P E P C Consulting Engineering to provide the necessary in-house engineering services for the Thompson Mazarella Park, uh, soccer field construction. It's actually the turf field, athletic field.
Don't move.
Who's the second?
Give it to Alan.
Okay, any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the other.
Excuse me, Elizabeth? The resolution is set up for a roll call vote.
Okay, uh, I'd like to, a motion to reopen the, um, 2020, I'd like a motion for Resolution 2022-099 to reopen it. May I have a second? Thanks, Alan. Uh, my roll call, Ed? Chauncey? Josh? Alan? And I vote yes as well. Um, thank you. Motion passes again unanimously. Okay, uh, the other discussion item, uh, item is additional striping for the pickleball court. I think this is Ed or Chauncey?
Yes.
Ed put it on. I'm not sure what we're saying.
I didn't put it on, did I?
Yes, I did put it on.
When we resurface the tennis courts, is it the color of the pickleball stripes? Is that it, Ed?
Yes, that's it.
Okay.
What do you think?
I don't, I don't think we should decide right now. I've, I've got the Pickleball Association looking around for precedent on this subject. The, for those of you who haven't had the good fortune to be up today on all of this, let me have 30 seconds. We have four tennis courts at the park. Three years ago, we striped the two of them, the furthest to the, uh, west for pickleball play as well, so that both sports can be played on those two courts. We're now, as you probably know, resurfacing all the courts, which is badly needed. That is in charge of that. And somehow or another, the question has come up, what color should the pickle ports be, lines be on the resurfaced courts? And no matter what color you pick, there are pros and cons. So, right now, what we have is, uh, we have, the border around the courts is green. The surface of the courts is sort of a light blue. The tennis lines, of course, are white and the pickleball lines are a bright blue. I think that's fine.
Are we asking the public for color suggestions?
But there are pickleball players who don't think they should also be blue. I don't know. I mean, that's, that's, that's.
Get a recommendation from the pickleball.
There has to be a standard for this.
I'm trying to get one.
You don't.
Josh, I'm trying to get the standard. So, let's, let's treat it as an information item. I've already bought it.
And are we going to stripe all four courts for pickleball or two?
No, the plan is to strike them all, so that both sports can be played on all four courts.
Okay. So, we're striping our tennis courts for pickleball?
What is that happening?
Well, okay, here's another question. We're supposed to plant that garden, Ed. Are we planting the garden after the tennis courts get resurfaced?
I don't think that matters.
I do.
I mean, you can do the, you can do the planting first, as well.
Well, it, are they going to get trampled with?
No, no. We have the fence, but I think it's a good question, Elizabeth.
Oh, you mean with?
Ed and I are meeting with somebody from.
April 1st.
Yeah, on April 1st and, and it's a good question. We'll address that.
All right, and who's working with Sue on these plantings? Okay, we need two more bids because it's, it doesn't adhere to our procurement policy. So, if we could get those, um, and, um, she might, must be out or something because, I mean, I know that we probably have until May to get these planted before it gets too hot, right?
Well, she didn't respond, but I think, think there is a, a window for sure. So.
Get some more bids and get it, um, planted. Anything else? Any other, um, comment or questions or, uh? Eleanor, hi.
I was thinking, wondering if you could, uh, put out a somehow survey the population about the American Rescue Plan money, like, for example, maybe something at the transfer station where a lot of people show up. I mean, there must be some way to reach out to people because so many.
Doing it by public notice for the meetings.
I know, but people don't, don't know about these public notices. I mean, they don't come to these meetings. You know that. So, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, that's kind of the public's responsibility, I think.
It is, and so I, as a. As a member of the public, I'm just suggesting that, you know, maybe if we reached out, we'd come up with some good ideas and a good way to spend the money. That's all I'm suggesting.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Any other comments or questions on any non-agenda items? Bob, you have anything for us? You're on mute. You got your?
No, I don't.
Okay, well, you got your, thanks for all your good work during this last storm. Highway Department continues to be excellent.
Thank you.
All right, so I think we've approved our bonding. We're moving ahead with the field, Michael. We need that, money in hand before we do any of this. And, um, I guess that's it. Anybody else? Okay, hearing nothing else, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. So, move. Thank you, everybody. Good night. So, move. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
All right.